I would call this a special Village Board of Trustees meeting for the Village of Indian Head Park to order. Today is Thursday, March 6, 2014 at 7:30 PM. Would the court please call and roll?
Mayor Andrews.
Here.
Trustee Schnopper.
Here.
Trustee Walsh.
Here.
Trustee Bailey.
Here.
Trustee Hinshaw, not present. Trustee Olakun.
Here.
Trustee Whitmer.
Here.
Do you have a question?
I'd like to remind everybody that the Village is making an official videotape recording of the proceedings here and that others may be making their own video or audio tapes. I would also ask that you please silence your cellphones. Please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. In this special board meeting tonight, we are here for one purpose and one person only, and that's for the consideration of my appointment of Mr. John Brooks of Western Springs as our Village Administrator and Chief of Police. Mr. Brooks is well qualified and can fill our needs immediately. At this time, I would like to introduce you to Mr. Brooks and ask Mr. Brooks if he could come up and tell us a little bit in his own words about his background. Thank you very much.
Welcome, everybody. My name is John Brooks. I'm a candidate for Chief of Police as well as the Village Administrator for the Village of Indian Head Park. I'll give you just a little bit of a very short background based upon my 33 years of law enforcement experience and administrative experience that I've undertaken. I'm married. I have three children. They're all grown. I'm married to my wife for the past 30 years, Linda. She's a special education teacher. And I have a couple hobbies. I coach basketball at Fenwick High School, the freshman level. And I also do a little upland hunting and field travel with a Labrador Retriever. But moving forward, I grew up in Berwyn. I went to grammar school and high school there, and then went to Loyola University where I received a Bachelor of Science in Criminal Justice. I took a couple examinations for a police officer, the Illinois State Police, a couple municipalities, and Berwyn. I was selected off of the eligibility list, and I entered the Chicago Police Academy in April of 1981. And after 16 weeks, I was assigned to the Patrol Division for the Berwyn Police Department. I served in that capacity for about two and a half years, and then I was transferred to the Detective and the Youth Division within the Berwyn Police Department, where I served in a variety of capacities to include a youth officer, a crime prevention officer for the city of Berwyn. I served in that capacity. I did a number of things while I was there. Through the Office of the Mayor and the Administration, I was the Neighborhood Watch, Director for the City. I also did a lot of things with that, which included meeting with homeowners and residents. And I really, really enjoyed that function. I also served as a Crime Prevention Officer. I also served in the crisis as a counselor to adolescent youths. And I also was in charge of the Berwyn Explorer Room. I decided in my career that I was going to leave the police department. I had always had a need to seek out what in federal law. So I sought out federal employment, and in July 19, 1987, I was selected as a Special Agent for the United States Department of Veteran Affairs, Office of Inspector General, Criminal Investigation Division. As I said standard today, I worked in one of the largest departments which honored and served veterans and says, "We honor those who serve." Well, I worked exactly in that department, the second-largest federal employer with about a quarter million employees. The VA is the largest healthcare provider in the United States. It has 171 hospitals, over 1,000 clinics. They have six mail-out pharmacies, and they have 50 regional offices that service benefits to our nation's benefits. I was specifically assigned to work criminal investigations on behalf of that department. I served in that capacity as a Special Agent for approximately 12 years. And then I was hired as the Assistant Special Agent in Charge for the Chicago Field Office. And in that particular capacity, I served Denver, Cleveland. I had offices in Denver, Cleveland, Kansas City, Chicago, Dallas, and Houston, Texas. All of those offices had a supervisor. They reported directly to me as the Assistant Special Agent in Charge, where we investigate a variety of criminal cases, which included general crimes, armed robberies, sexual assaults, white-collar healthcare fraud, a number of criminal type of cases that would be employee-related or not employee-related. Approximately two years later, I then was promoted to the Special Agent in Charge of the Chicago Field Office, I believe January of 2000, where I served in that capacity until January 10 of this year, where I retired as a Special Agent in Charge for the United States Department of Veteran Affairs Criminal Investigation Division in Chicago. We have a mandatory retirement age of 57. I turned 55 in January of this year. I really enjoyed the work that I did in all phases. I worked with a wide variety of law enforcement organizations in my 14 states. I served 46 medical centers, 14 regional offices, hundreds of clinics. Each day brought something different to exactly what we did. Reactive crimes that we looked at were just wide and varied every single day. I did administration work, human resources. I trained individuals. I recruited individuals, disciplined employees. I was in charge of budgets for travel, procurement, investigative equipment, leasing of vehicles, office space, field training, in-service training, mentoring, which I did. In this particular, myself as a candidate, I looked at this opportunity, and I looked up various definitions of what a Village Administrator does. They oversee the day-to-day operations of all the departments within a particular village. Communication, preparation of administrative budget, human resources, employee benefits, special events, community outreach, and various boards and committees. And that's exactly pretty much what I did as the SAC for this department, is budgets and community outreach, lecturing to people, military, civilian people throughout my tenure. So I saw a very good corollary when I was considered for this position, that I would be working in this capacity, doing budgets and reaching out to individuals publicly speaking, as well as being a candidate for the Chief of Police. One thing I'd like to mention, and I think it's an important quote that I think is important in this particular position. "As a Chief of Police, I firmly believe that everyone is entitled to live in a peaceful and safe society. Policing is a call of service and has been built upon a proud tradition of enduring principles of public trust that started almost 200 years ago with Sir Robert Peel in Great Britain in the Metropolitan Police Department of London." And he said, and I quote, "The police are the public and the public are the police." The police being the only members of public who are paid and given full attention to the duties to keep individuals safe. So nearly 200 years ago, since this was first stated, it really hasn't changed much. It's that the police are the public and the public are the police. So with that, I'd like to share with you, I'm extremely interested in this position. I would work incredibly hard with both the trustees, council to the mayor, the administration, and the village residents. I would give 100% dedication to serve for this village. Thank you very much.
Mr. Brooks, at this time, could I ask you to step down the hall to the other office?
Sure.
While we continue with our meeting.
Thank you.
Some of the mayor's report will continue, and then we'll get to the audience and then actually consider the appointment of Mr. Brooks.
Please use your big voice.
You can also move up if I can't speak loud enough. Thank you. "The Village President has the authority and the obligation to make appointments with the advice and consent of the Village Board of Trustees in the best interest of the village." That is what I intend to do by my appointment tonight. I'm highly enthusiastic about Mr. Brooks. You saw him, you heard him, and the skill set he brings to the table. Copy the resume on the table here if you haven't picked one up. He certainly has proven law enforcement qualifications and administrative skills. The village has many important matters to deal with rather than being bogged down in what could be a lengthy search for the ideal candidate or candidates. We could search for several months and find someone better, but not at our ability to pay or not find anyone as good as Mr. Brooks. None of us here or in this village has a crystal ball. What we can act on is what we have before us, what we can see. Mr. Brooks is a person who is well qualified, replace Frank Alonzo. On the same terms, by the way, as we were paying Mr. Alonzo. I see no downside to us acting now. At a meeting or two ago, one of our residents, Mr. Haney, said that the Village Board of Trustees needed to show the village we are trying to save money by consenting to the appointment of Mr. John Brooks, who would be doing just that, filling two positions with a quality and intelligent individual for the same as what we have been employing, Mr. Alonzo. It is a benefit to us on many levels, including financially and having a new set of eyes to look at how we operate. There is precedent in our village. There have, prior to this opening and my intended appointment, three people serving the two dual roles here in the village. Ray Garitano, and then Wayne Green, and then Frank Alonzo. There is also precedent for the Village President to appoint somebody to a position without a job search. For example, President Jenke appointed a friend of his, Brookfield Police Chief John Heimel, to be the Police Chief for Indian Head Park to fill an opening. My predecessor, Richard Pellegrino, appointed Frank Alonzo as the Village Administrator, a retired police chief with no prior Village Administrator experience to the Village Administrator job without a job search. And as events unfolded, I was able to talk to Mr. Alonzo to fill a void when Chief Crowley passed away. Now, you might ask, and I know there are questions out there. Well, why don't we look for a bunch of people and screen the applicants and candidates and see if we can come up with somebody with Village Administrator experience? Why are we going forward when John will admit and has admitted that he has not worked in local village administration? With no experience, he brings a set of skills that are demonstrated by his position with the federal government. John didn't tell you, but he has a high-risk security clearance from the federal government, so I think we're safe in that regard. He does have administrative experience in managing the field office for the central, I believe, the region. Central field office. And certainly, no one can question his qualifications. Berwyn police officer, federal government, criminal investigations. He's well qualified to take on the position of Chief of Police. What he lacks in experience on the Village Administrator side, he has the intelligence and experience on a different level that he can learn the job and learn it quickly. Two or three months from now, he may not be available. I came to this decision to save us the time and the effort. We really don't have staff to go through a long, involved process. It is the obligation of the Village President, which I happen to hold that position at this time, to move the village forward, and that's what my intent is. We have three full-time, longtime employees that work in the administrative side. They are well-learned in the tasks of the government and can help out what a new administrator would need. And then be a partner until he gets his feet on the ground and is able to implement whatever improvements, to the extent that he sees ways to improve the village, to which I am open to, and to help us to move forward. We have this opportunity at this time. It brings to us, and he did mention, his ability and experience dealing with elected officials, federal and state level. He has contacts at various levels in law enforcement, federal, state, and county side. He does have the police experience. So I don't see any, you know, I personally don't see a problem with this. We talk about, on the one hand, the form of going through, posting a job ad, getting resumes, screening through them. Who's going to do that? Who's ultimately going to make the choice? But we have somebody as qualified as Mr. Brooks is, right here, right now, live and in person, and with all the important other things that we need. The last thing we need to do is to politicize an appointment that I have the right to make with the advice and consent of the board. I can't come in here and say, "Hey, he's it," and I'm not doing that. But I certainly am going to advocate favor of my appointment. You've heard him, and at this time, I'm going to open the discussion to the residents in the audience for questions or comments regarding this agenda item only. This is a special board meeting for this purpose. And I would ask that you respect each other while you're talking. Allow opposing viewpoints the opportunity to complete their statement and just in general be mannered toward each other. Chair recognizes.
Andrew, Mayor, 21 Stonehenge Square. I had the honor to work with Mayor at JP, and I put my trust in him. When he decided that he wanted to appoint Chief Heimel, who had retired from Brookfield, to be our Chief of Police, it was a precious gift to this village. He was outstanding. All you have to do is just go on the other side of this building and talk to the offices. They respected, they admired him, and I can't say enough about him. I also put my trust, again, when Dr. Ray Garitano was made only the Administrator, but the Chief of Police. These were wonderful gifts to our village, and I can't say enough about those decisions of our former mayor.
Thank you. Anybody else?
There were letters that I understand were written to the board. Will those be read into the record?
I don't intend to read all emails that came into the board, but I do have one from trustee Hinshaw that he wants me to read, so that will probably take care of that. Do you have it?
Well, it's 10:00, 6491 Indian Head Trail. I had the opportunity to meet John Brooks myself as a former member of law enforcement, retiring from the Chicago Police Department. I had a unique insight into basically what we are looking for here in the village. Aside from a police chief, which I see that I consider to be quite qualified for given the fact that he is familiar with the policing concept, which is very important. Most people would say, "Well, he's a federal law enforcement official, that he is responding to investigative needs, and he's not focused on policing." Well, his experience on the Berwyn Police Department certainly establishes him as being key, capable to step in and handle the needs of Indian Head Park so far as policing is concerned. I think his abilities and his capabilities and his record as being an administrator with the Veterans Administration, with their budget, is probably, I can't even imagine how much higher it would be than in the Indian Head Park budget. The number of people that he has supervised, the problems that he has encountered and has adjudicated, and dealing with the political aspects of the office. I think that makes him immensely qualified as an administrator. I think if you could administrate an office as a Special Agent in Charge of the Central Region for the Veterans Administration Inspector General's Office, I think he'd be quite capable of coming in and handling the administrative needs of our village. Mr. Mayor, I think you've found a very competent and capable candidate for this position. I think that I would say that I was very impressed with him, and I'm very impressed with his credentials and his capabilities.
Thank you.
Mary Urina, 6402 Arrowhead Court. I don't discount Mr. Brooks's abilities to handle the job. However, I would like to go on the record saying that I think it is a mistake to not follow standard recruiting practices, to publicly post the position, gather candidates, vet those candidates, and make a decision based on those credentials.
Thank you for your comment. Your opinion is noted for the record. In the back, I think it was on this side. Okay, in the back over here.
Shirley Yang, 111201 Brookline. Out of curiosity, had Mr. Brooks become aware of the position and how it's structured? Was he provided with a job description for both the Police Chief role as well as the Village Manager role?
I contacted him based on input from a, from the acquaintance of mine, and we took it from there, and I talked to him, and that's how it unfolded. It unfolded in relatively recent times, but you met the man, you saw the credentials. I hope you can understand why I'm personally enthusiastic about them, and I elevate substance over form, so that's why we're here. I thought I saw one there. Okay, back here. Go ahead.
I just had a second comment. I know there's concern that perhaps recruiting an experienced village manager may cost more in terms of salary and even potentially offer benefits, but I would just like the board to consider, an experienced manager would be able to make the village more efficient and would probably self-fund himself or herself if we paid a higher salary because finding some cost efficiencies could actually pay for that extra cost, that extra experience.
Okay, thank you. Your comment, your opinion is noted for the record. In the far back.
Erica Hearn, 11327 Arrowhead Trail. It just sounds like, in the interest of, I guess, doing things according to posting a job and gathering candidates, well, I think that's great, and we should probably, you know, do that. I think also, on the other hand, you found someone who is totally qualified. And as was said by the gentleman up in front, he's got plenty of experience, I think, for this position. And I feel as though if he's not appointed, like you said, time is of the essence. We might not have this guy in a couple months from now. I don't think we can wait. I think we've got the guy for the job, so I really hope that the board considers that viewpoint. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Your opinion is noted for the record.
John Olakun, 6309 Keyakuck. Village President Andrews, I want to ask you, have you followed your own agreed-upon process in this hiring?
I'm not sure I know what you're referring to, sir.
You don't know if you have a process or if you agreed on the process?
You mentioned an agreed-upon process, so would you describe to me what you say was an agreed-upon process?
I'm not, I'm not sure that I know.
Then how is it that you can ask if I follow?
Well, I thought it was an open forum where I could ask anything.
Well, you can ask that, but for me to answer, I would like to know what you're referring to and where did you, how did you come into the fair knowledge to ask that there was an agreed-upon process?
Hinshaw's email laid out a process that the Village Trustees had agreed upon to follow for hiring a candidate.
Well, the only discussion that we had with respect to hiring a candidate was conducted during an executive session, was our confidential and privileged discussions and not to be made public. So I want to know, is it Mr. Hinshaw's email about what went on during, his view of what went on during the executive session? Is that what you're referring to?
Yes, it is.
Okay. I have no comment on that?
Okay, so you did know what I was talking about.
Now that you've explained it, I understand where you're coming from. Mr. Metz?
I think it's very, extremely short-sighted to look at just one candidate and not open this up. He may be very well the best candidate. He may not be. We don't know who's out there if we don't take a look. This is akin to taking one bit on a project in town and saying, "Oh, well, that's all we got. It looks good to me, and we should go for it," and not open any competitive bidding. We don't know that there's a candidate out there that may have village administration experience and police experience, be able to handle both positions very well. We just don't know. You were quoted in the paper as saying that we were going to have two different people for these positions. All of a sudden, whoa, we got somebody. We have to have a special meeting. We got to get them in right away. This is completely wrong. And I would like to know, with these letters that were sent, I heard that there are quite a few. How many people are in favor? How many have been against? I imagine it's easy to tell by reading them.
Well, thank you for your comment, Mr. Metz, and your opinion is noted for the record. I will say that I received approximately 12 emails. I don't know of other people, because it seemed there were a number that were addressed to the whole board, including myself. There were others that I think were sent to the trustees and excluded sending them to me. And there may have been a couple that I received. A good number of them that I received are hard to characterize as to whether they're for or against, because although they seem to talk about process, the conclusion was that we want you to make sure you're hiring a highly qualified person for the position. And in my opinion, that's what we have. So if I like to look at those as being in favor of what I'm doing, I would put those numbers on the plus side, if you will.
Was that one or two?
And there were a few that were to the contrary.
Was that one or two that said that they hope you're doing it the right way? And you think those are in your favor and whether it's for the majority?
I have no comment.
I would assume the majority were against, because everything I've heard from people is that they think this process is completely wrong.
Well, everything I heard from a bunch of other people think that this is 100%, right on, accurate, the best way to go for the village. And especially when you have an individual who, like Mr. Haney came, saying, "We have to show that we're trying to save the village money, and I'm doing just that with the high qualifications." So your comment is noted. Thank you for your opinion. I appreciate that.
I'll deploy the letters to find out.
In the front?
Yeah, Robert Burson, 20 shooting the court. The last three appointments for that job were appointed directly, were not funded by a search party. They seem to work all right, since I've lived here for 40 years. The other part of the question is, you're trying to save money for the village. There is no way, if an Asian economy, you, anybody, for the kind of money you're making, will work for this village. You're a village of under 4,000 people. Let's face it, we're not that big a deal, unfortunately. You will get some very inexperienced people that will want to get a job here and move on within six months or years. If I've been through that, I mean. And I think that the person, I don't understand why he wants the job. He's sort of qualified.
Right.
I mean, I think he's perfect on that job, and the point is, you're trying to save money. And you will never find, trust me, I've lived through that with a high reputation, anybody for anywhere near that kind of money to do the job he's going to do. So that's a simple financial point. Plus, I think he's very well qualified.
We'll do one more, and then we're going to cut it off. Miss Yang in the back.
I think, I believe, if I'm correctly, I'm wrong, that there's probably less concern about his qualifications on the law enforcement side and more so on the Village Administrator side. Could the board consider appointing Mr. Brooks as the Police Chief and then as the interim Village Manager? And then we could still pursue a process where we can field some other candidates. And if he would be agreeable, could we at least dip our toe in the water to see who else is out there? And he could be considered along with those other candidates in the Village Management role, since it could potentially be a part-time role. And it seems like from his resume, his objective is to find a role in a municipal police department, and that would be more fitting to his own objectives, which is more focused on the law enforcement side. Is that something we could possibly consider?
Yeah, I thought about it, and we could parse up his roles in different directions, but that's not what I discussed with him ultimately to reach us to this board meeting. And it's my intent to recommend his appointment as Village Administrator and Chief of Police under the same terms and conditions that we had with Frank Alonzo.
I have one comment.
30 seconds. Go ahead.
There is somebody running for the Governor of the State of Illinois who has absolutely no municipal experience, if that's all I'm saying, honestly. And he's running to be governor. So the fact he has no municipal experience-
And he's running to be governor. So the fact is, no municipal experience has nothing to do with that. Just, you know, I'm pushing out a little here. I think what we have to really do is take a look at the cost of search.